All right, good evening everyone. We'll go ahead and get started and while you work on that. So just a minute or two after six, 6:00 PM was supposed to time for the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, July 11th, 2023. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Adam Clark, do we have a form?
Yes, sir, we have forms.
Next item is pledge of allegiance under invocation. And at that time, at this time, I'll recognize Mr. Brandon Rup, who's going to give tonight's invocation and lead us into pledge. Thank you, Brandon.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we appreciate you for giving us another day in the world and allowing us to get together as a community and a group of citizens to express our opinions and thoughts and guide our community into the future. Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials which are, who are present.
Deputy Marty Cooper, President of the
Alvin Sher.
Next, I'll recognize any veterans that we have.
Mr. Allen, right here. Introduce yourself in the brand.
Cindy Bailey, with the Air Force.
March Hooper, Army News.
Monica Lockwood, Marine Corps.
David Williams, Army.
Nathan Mullinax, US Army.
Jackie Rockford, US Air Force.
Paul Edberg, US Army.
Sharon Yob, US Air Force.
And the one standing back there.
Joel Bristol, United States Marine Corps.
Brandon Rup, US Army National Guard.
David Pluss, United States Navy.
The only husband of US Army. We've got veterans pins. How many of you got ones of veteran's pins? How many don't? If you don't have one, come up front and I'll give you one. You want to help us?
One of you, county seal, under its protection.
Thank you all. Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement president.
Andy Halbrook, County Chair of the Board.
Alvin Sher.
Thank you guys for your service. Next, we'll recognize any county department.
Carrie Melman, Assistant Attorney.
Cindy Hansen, Health Department.
Rebecca Johnson, DSS.
Allison Moon, Human Resources.
Next item on the agenda is to propose or to adopt a nice agenda. So commissioners, you have represented the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, we, I need a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion or questions? If you're not all as far as say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Question carries on. Next item on the agenda, special recognition. We'll start with Pinnacle Classical Academy State Archery Championship. Mr. Todd Todd. Can you come up front? How are you doing, sir?
I'm great.
Yes, sir, right? Yeah, they can stand up. You can bring them up front, however you'd like to do that.
Not only are these guys state champions, but they're also second place in the nation. Nobody ever complained about not being able to hear me. In that second place in the nation, to my knowledge, we are the only school team left in this competition. Everybody else's clubs that are able to handpick their members, whereas we still take all our students from the school. So it's a, it's a big accomplishment to be competitive. These guys have put in a ton of work. And our season starts in January. We just finished up. That's how long it runs. And we're still doing work, but as far as official season, that's how long that season runs. So congratulations, guys.
So Todd, at this time, we have a mark of nomination that the clerk will read and we'll present it to you guys.
Pinnacle Classical Academy Archery Championships. Whereas Cleveland County is proud to be home to Pinnacle Classical Academy. And whereas Pinnacle Classical Academy Archery Team, the Thunderbirds, through hard work and perseverance, achieved national championships, state titles, and numerous other accomplishments. As the Thunderbirds take great pride in respecting their opponents in archery, competing with class and dignity. And whereas the demanding athletic competition requires the highest levels of skills, determination, teamwork, and focus on selfless commitment to others. And whereas these outstanding archers, Mackenzie Glenn, Heather Carswell, Anne Lee Kilby, Aiden Smith, Brylee Gladen, Emma Gladen, Emma Perkins, Deana Gladen, Chase Abernathy, John Gavin Dellinger, and Hunter Gladon have represented themselves, their families, their school, and their community proudly. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby commends, congratulates, and gives special recognition to the Pinnacle Classical Academy Archery Team for their extraordinary achievements and championships adopted this the 11th day of July, 2023.
Oh, we'll just come back up here behind you.
Have me shot at the turn we had out of gun range. You only do it?
Congratulations. Congratulations. You guys get to the ceremony.
If any of the parents wants to take pictures, they can come up front and take them. Hold it right, hold it right where you're at.
Next item on the agenda is the Kings Mountain Emergency Medical Services Training Class. At this time, I'll recognize our Deputy EMS Director, Sammy Davis.
Good evening. I am Sammy Davis, Deputy Director of the EMS here. In the summer of '22, as an agency, we decided to take on a project supporting an EMT course in a local high school. Kings Mountain High School was selected to be the initial location. And over the next few weeks, I worked with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Cleveland County School CTE, Kings Mountain High School Administration, where we developed and tailored a course outline to meet our needs and work to ensure that all the needed equipment and supplies were gathered. The class began in August of '22, scheduled for two semesters. And in May of 2023, nine students completed and passed this program. We believe that to be a great success. So far, out of those nine students, two have been hired and are currently employed by our agency, and four others are currently in the hiring process. With that, I'm pleased to introduce the very important people of Cleveland County EMS that were an integral part of this project. When I call your names, please stand and remain standing. Yeah, but come on up front. William David Trammell, Transport Officer. He was the initial instructor of the program and played a major role in getting the foundation laid. Mr. Carl Lynch. Carl's primary assignment is as one of our community paramedics. However, his focus in community and classroom education led him to become the primary course instructor. And finally, our guest of honor, if you will, the graduates of the EMT program, that are also now our newest employees, Thomas Lubus and Samir Satchel. We're also thankful for Melissa Leeds of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Rhonda Benfield, the CTE District Coordinator of Cleveland County Schools, and Dr. Dustin Moorhead, Principal of Kings Mountain High School. I'm so proud of the outcome of this project. It is great to know that courses like EMT can be offered in our high schools that can result in immediate job placement. And upon successful completion, beginning this fall, in addition to Kings Mountain High School, an EMT course will also be offered by Shelby High School. And I personally hope that in the future, all Cleveland County high schools can offer an EMT program to continue to be as successful as this one. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners?
I know it. I appreciate it. I was EMT at one time for about 25 years, got EMT I certification. But the job I had, I didn't have time to continue working for the rest of squad. I was a Kings Mountain rest of squad for about 20 years. So most of you know Johnny Blantney, Johnny used to teach at the college and so forth. So I know the dedication that the students put in to achieve their accomplishment. Congratulations.
Congratulations, you guys. Clerk has a token for you. Next item on the agenda, citizen recognition. Madam Clerk?
The citizen recognition portion of a Board of Commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Board to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. In the event a group of persons supporting or opposing the same position desire to be heard, the Board Chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson for the group. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. Speakers must discuss only items within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. While speakers are free to discuss county employees and officials, the Board requests that speakers be courteous and respectful in their comments. Speakers are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. The Board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this portion of the meeting. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate county agency.
Thank you, ma'am. First, citizen is Nathan Mullinax.
First of all, thank you all for taking your time to hear me. My name is Nathan Mullinax. I'm a veteran of US Army. And I'm also on the American Legion. So I'm on the Honor Guard there. I'm the post service officer there as well. Don't claim to be accredited. I just simply help out with the paperwork and getting them to the right people in the right places. We do have VSOs that sit around and help out with financial needs. And that is one of my concerns is...
If you're a veteran or a supporter of a veteran, can I ask you to stand up, please?
Just, just wanted to acknowledge that if any one of these individuals came to the county and asking for assistance, they would be denied. They would be told to go to the American Legion, the DAV, or the VFW, because the county budget, right here, if anyone knows how to explain this to me or would like to look through it, is public record. There is nothing in there designating funds for veterans that need assistance, whether it's food, housing, shelter, basic necessities. And I'm, I'm just outraged that this county does not offer any financial assistance to the veterans. And they rely on 60, 70, and 80-year-olds to be out in the heat soliciting funds to be able to help their brothers and sisters in arms. And I'm aware that we have a county service officer here, but many of my fellow veterans have come to me in concerns that they're not getting the help and support they need from, from that individual in the county office. So I'm bringing it before the commissioners. Maybe that individual and the, the county rep needs assistance. You know, I'm not going to bad mouth anyone or, or say anything bad, but maybe they need more assistance. That way, more veterans can feel like they're getting the, the help they, they desire from here. But as far as not having any funds available for a veteran in need, just sleeping out here in, under the bridges or in the holes, it's saddening. And to be able to go out and do Honor Guard and do the funeral services to honor those 21-gun salutes is an honor for me. But if we don't have funds for the blank ammo and the uniforms, we're not going to be able to do it. And I'm just simply asking for a deeper look into the county budget for what the veterans' assistance and maybe the Veterans' Council can have the, the funds available, or whoever needs to address those. I'm just asking for a deeper investigation on getting veterans some funds. Thank you.
Next citizen is Ingberg Collins.
Hi, good evening. My name is Inky Collins, and I live out in Woodbridge. I'm concerned about the, what is going to be coming up for a vote this evening about the RA designation or rural agricultural designation. Because when they, when these codes were set forth, both on the state and the county level, the intention was to provide agricultural and residential uses in rural parts of the county, but on a very limited basis. And really, what they had in mind was, and that was according to Section 12-121, what they had in mind is what is described in Section 12-137, which rural home occupations which can be conducted there. And what they had in mind were family businesses where there was no more than one employee that actually resided outside the home. So the fact that we have to keep in mind that when you're going to be approving or voting down something, keep in mind what the intention of the law originally was, okay? Because certainly, a microbrewery, it's not as if there is no lack of commercial property in this county. There is plenty, okay? So we don't need to invade the original intent for these zoning designations just because a company wants to get the quote "country vibe" in order to grow their business. The microbreweries, also, my concern is that they would be, they would be engaging in wholesale trade of their beverages as well as retail trade, and both of which are not permitted under the permitted uses of the RA designation. And so if that is approved, you would be, they would be, it would be violating the law. The other thing that, of course, that I have concern about, as well as all the neighbors, is besides the fact that there was very little notification regarding zoning, rezoning, there's a great concern about noise as well as light pollution, okay? There's a reason why we live out in the area that we do. We don't want the noise and the bright lights. And the other concern that I have is certainly, if people are going to brewery, I think they're going to be drinking alcohol and they're going to be driving. Well, that and going down a dark windy road, specifically Stony Point, is a recipe for disaster. And I, I think I would encourage everyone to vote against any changes of allowing microbreweries to be permitted under RA zoning. Thank you.
Next, we have Wayne Smiley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Smiley. I live on Stony Point Road, 955. And I'm here about the brewery thing too. To me, and maybe I'm just being, jumping to conclusions, but I'm 79 years old, and I've seen a couple things in my years, and I've done a couple. Beer drinkers don't go in a place to sip a beer. Brewery is a place to drink beer. If you're going to have breweries all over the county, to me, you're opening up the county to public beer joints all over the county, to Sam's, who's in South Carolina. Now, maybe you'll say, well, they're just going to sell what they brew, but I find that hard to believe. People go into a place to drink beer, they don't go in there just, everybody don't go in there for one particular beer. There's as many tastes for beer as there are people. And I'm sure we all know that. So, in my way of thinking, this is, this is not simply a brewery for people to make their craft beers and sell it to the public. And I think this would be, once this got their foot in the door, you're going to have concerts, bands, hundreds of people in these places. And if any of you people live out in the county, I don't think you'd appreciate it in front of your house. All the commotion and all the traffic and all intoxicated people, driving or otherwise. So I'm, I'm totally against anything like this. We've got, we've got beer sales and consumption in the cities. And it's not too far from anywhere in the county to a city if they want to go drink some beer. Now we've got to where they can go to the package store, any local store. If it's not now, it probably will be soon, and buy their beer and take it home and drink it. So I don't see that we need to, to open up the county to public places for people to go and party and drink beer, bands and noise. We've got enough noise in the county as it is, especially in some places. And another thing I would like to do...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Rockford.
Jackie Rockford, 110-year field driver. All right, I'm not as eloquent as Inky, but just for a reference, there's 141 breweries from Kings Mountain to Charlotte. From Kings Mountain to Asheville, there's 71. There's already two now slated for Kings Mountain in the city. There's one at the train tracks and then one on 161 going towards South Carolina. Stony Point is a two-lane winding road. Within the last five years, we've noticed a huge change with more homes being built. We are growing. But why so many people are building homes and moving here is they want to get out of the cities. 15,000 barrels is not a small amount. The land is over a million. And this project will probably cost about the same. There's no way they're just going to sell onsite. They're going to push to now bottle, they're going to push to sell. That means tractor trailers coming in, even if they get the little pickup truck trailers, it's still more and more traffic coming in. And I don't know if you're aware of Stony Point, right where that farm comes up, is probably one of the worst turns on Stony Point. And in the middle of the night, I go, I go 30 around that. And I live there, so I know what, what's there. You get somebody who's drinking or on their way and just happy to be there, they're going off the road, they're going to go into Smiley's yard. Sorry. My key point, and I'm just going to get, get it. Okay. Okay. Philip and Jillian Hitty are not buying this property. They're representing themselves as they are. It says, "other concerned parties." It doesn't say who they are. It just says, "that's on the permit." Doesn't say who's buying it. Who's going to deal with the waste? Are they going to have access to our local waste management? Are they going to have a restaurant there? That's a different... Are they going to have access, obviously, to the Sheriff's Department? They're going to have to hire bouncers, but ultimately, now the sheriffs are going to be taken away from our properties. The fire department, what if there's a fire? What if there's an accident? Now, our fire departments are going to need more resources. Inky already said on lighting and traffic noise, so, but those were my big things. Our officers, fire department, all those resources are now going to be headed right to this brewery. Because you know, eventually it'll happen. So, thank you.
Uh, next, we have Ms. Hooper.
Good evening. March Hooper.
Address. Ms. Hooper, your address?
Oh, 157 Belmar Road, Kings Mountain. As a veteran, I'm appalled at the attitude that prevails in the county towards veterans. I have recently joined the post 82, very busy post 82. And as a member of the post, I am also on the Honor Guard. I perform services such as on the Memorial Day, presenting flags of various events. And I will be at funerals, presenting colors. And my counterparts will be performing a 21-gun salute and folding the American flag and presenting that to your family if I'm given the honor. Who pays for all this? We do. Every single member is required to pay for their uniform. I don't stand there in rags in front of the families. I don't give them a raggedy flag. It is precise and we look good. The American Legion pays for their own, each member pays for their own uniform. And the bullets for that 21-gun salute, there's not a dime that is provided for any of this. And in fact, we aren't allocated a single dime for any of the American Legion. I can't read. I don't have my glasses. So we're the ones out there working at the, working at the concession stands at the, at the World Series. And we're out there providing a service. So you would think that we would have some kind of help with our expenses. So this is what I would like. I would like something to be I would like something to be done to help the American Legion at least reimburse us for our ammunition for the twenty-one gun salute or to help us with our uniforms that we are required to wear. I would also like something to be done to help the veterans in the need of food, clothing, and shelter. Their basic human needs are not being met. You have a veterans council, you have someone sitting in the county office building, and still those needs are not being met. So, I would like to have something done about that. There are six thousand four hundred and twelve veterans in Cleveland County then, and probably about a third of them need help of some kind. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Ginger Bullock.
Pull the mic down so we can hear you. Hey, can you reset that time then? Okay, my name is Ginger Bullock. I'm a taxpaying citizen of Cleveland County. I'm here tonight because of my deep concern for animals and citizens of Cleveland County as it relates to animal welfare. We have some real problems in the county and at animal services. The number one problem in this county as it relates to cats and dogs is overpopulation. Yet, there is no low-cost spay and neuter program, not even a reduced-cost spay and neuter. There's just nothing. How does that make any sense? If you call to inquire about spay and neuter, they will refer you to Animal Welfare Association. I am assuming this is really association of the welfare of animals, which assume, which can only transport twenty-six animals per month. Half of them have to be male and half of them have to be female. So, I'm not sure how this is going to address the problem we have in this county. What could help is animal licensure, bringing, bring it in and bringing in much-needed funds. Another problem is officer response to citizens' calls and complaints about strays tethering injured animals, et cetera. I personally been working with an elderly woman, seventy-nine years old, and her husband, a veteran who is eighty-one years old, to get animal control to take two stray cats from their property. One finally got injured, and they felt so bad for it that they took it in and spent three hundred dollars of their fixed income because they didn't want to watch it get infected and eventually die. She began calling on May sixteenth, and it took until July third to get animal control out there. That is only because I got involved finally, and they called because they were so frustrated and so concerned, they couldn't get any help, so they called one of the rescues that I work with. And I finally had to tell them that she's been logging these calls ever since the first day of May sixteenth. I got the right person, they finally got somebody out there. May sixteenth to July third. And that's only because that other cat had gotten injured and, and had a broken leg, and it rattled around for over a month like that. Got to skip on here. Anyway, I do think that we really have to do something. And it's very important that we work on the board, the board that the commissioners put together, the Animal Advisory Board. One of our members had called the director as soon as he got there, and, and that's okay. She called again after our last meeting, and we all complained about it. And she left an email and a message and still has never gotten a call back. I think the fault lies with you on that. It's your committee, I mean, you put it together. Don't you care enough to follow up on something that you put together? Out of time, too bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. At this time, I recognize our county manager, Todd Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the consent agenda tonight is the approval of a minutes from the June sixth and June twenty, twenty twenty-three regular commissioners meeting. The next item is Finance Department Budget Transfer Summary. This is required by North Carolina General Statute. All internal transfers shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners. The budget transfer summary from June fifteenth, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-three is included in the commissioners' packet. Tax Administration Monthly Report is also included on the consent. This shows the June twenty, twenty-three collection report to include real estate taxes and vehicle taxes collected showing ninety-eight point twenty-two percent. This is slightly lower than last year at this time, which was ninety-eight point fifty-eight percent collected. The Tax Administration Abatements and Supplements is the next item on the agenda of June twenty-three. Monthly abatements total two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cent, and the supplements total sixty-five thousand five eighty-four and twenty-eight cents. Sheriff's Office has a budget amendment on the consent. It's a budget allocation for twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and funds to purchase a Flock safety camera system. Item F on the consent is also from the sheriff's office. It's this request to remove the service weapon for retiring Captain John Wright. The sheriff's office would like to present the retiring captain John Wright with his departmental service weapon. Captain Wright will retire on August first of twenty-three after twenty-seven years of full-time law enforcement service with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office. The service weapon requested to be removed is the Glock nine-millimeter Model seventeen. Item G on the consent is from the legal department. This is the sale of county-owned property, parcels two oh two five four and two three oh four three. Cleveland County acquired these parcels located on eight oh five North Morgan Street. First parcel was acquired for fourteen, acquired for fourteen thousand dollars. And parcel twenty-three oh four three located at two oh five West Grover in Shelby was acquired for a hundred and six thousand dollars, both in twenty nineteen. Cleveland County listed these properties for sale at the full price of two hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and upset bid process was completed, and reliable innovations LLC was the highest bid. Staff recommends approving the offer made on the parcels, authorizing county staff to prepare a purchase agreement, and warranty deed to sell these parcels. Item H is a legal deed of trust release. This original deed of trust was made on September thirtieth of twenty twenty by and between M.A. Shelby LLC Prom Materials Recovery. This parcel is parcel number three oh four nine eight, it's located at one thirty-five Old Boy and Springs Road in Shelby. On May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, Cleveland County received a letter from the Department of Commerce explaining that Cleveland County successfully completed the program requirements from the grant authorizing release of the deed of trust, and staff recommends doing so. The last item, I believe, on consent is from the commissioners, and this is NPO Resolution of Support. Resolution is from the commissioners to keep the membership in the, keep their membership in the Cleveland, Gaston Cleveland Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, we have been presented with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, I undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written, as presented by, by our county manager.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those fair will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is...
Mr. Chair, if, if on May before we go into public hearing and listening to the comments to start with, I know we don't relate to them, but I don't think that most of the people out on Stony Point Road know that they pull that rezoning with for that property. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're going to discuss that when we get to that, but that's not the first item.
It wasn't, but I think that some of them are intent.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you read our statement?
Yes, sir. After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the Board of Commissioners. There are no comments made to other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right, thank you, ma'am. First of all, I recognize our planning director, Chris Martin, who will come forward and present planning department case twenty-three dash fourteen. This is a request to rezone property at three ninety, three ninety-two or three ninety-two Prior Street from restricted residential to residential. Chris.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. I've got four items for you tonight, and the first is, is a code amendment request, and the petitioner is asking to change the zoning of a parcel at three ninety-two Prior Street from restricted residential to residential. The property is located on Prior Street in the Light Oak Community off of Oak Grove Road, which is east of Shelby. And it is property highlighted in the black that you see on your screen. And it, you can see that it sits between the two districts, the white representing the residential zoning district and the yellow representing the restricted residential district. And they are asking, again, they are asking to go from the restricted to the regular residential. The difference between these two sites is that the restricted residential allows only site-built homes and modular homes and then some civic uses such as churches and schools, while the requested district of the regular residential allows also the homes plus manufactured, manufactured housing. And then it also allows for some home businesses and, and multifamily uses. Here you can see an aerial photo of the, of that neighborhood. And there, the uses in that neighborhood consist mostly of site-built homes, and you will also notice some single-wide manufactured homes in the neighborhood. So, the requested district and the requested uses could be considered compatible with that neighborhood. Land use plan designates this area as primary growth. We expect this area to, to be developed over the next fifteen years for more intense uses. We presented this case to the planning board, and they recommend approval. They noted that it would be compatible with that surrounding area and that it would be a continuation of that existing residential zoning district. And this one does require public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, do, do any of us have any questions before we open the public hearing? On this case, this is the one at three ninety-two Prior Street, just off Oak Grove Road. All right, there's no questions or comments. At this time, the public hearing is open. We had no one to sign up, but I'll ask if anybody in the room would like. So, is anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case twenty-three dash fourteen? This is, again, a request to rezone property at three ninety-two Prior Street from restricted residential to residential. If you'd like to speak for or against, please come forward and state your name and address. I'll ask again, anyone wishing to speak for or against the case twenty-three dash fourteen, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, here none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or discussion?
I think it appears that, like you showed, it, it's on the line, so it could go either way. And if no one has any more questions, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Do you want, do you want to put the map back up?
No.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve, and you were...
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion to second to approve. Any questions or discussion? All right, here none, all of the fair will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Next item, Chris will come back again. So, this is planning case twenty-three dash fifteen. This is a request to rezone property at four fourteen Davis Road from residential to neighborhood business. This is a conditional use permit for a recreation vehicle park expansion. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman Gordon. So, this next case is also a request to change the zoning map. They're asking to change this parcel or this area from residential to neighborhood, neighborhood business conditional use for the purposes of developing the, this area as an expansion of an existing RV park. And it's located along fourteen, four fourteen Davis Road, which is between, in the Patterson Springs Shelby area. And you can see here, we have highlighted that parcel totaling about eighteen acres. The zoning districts in this area include residential, which is the white color, and then you'll see the orange and yellow or other versions of residential being the manufactured home parks and the restricted. And then you've got some commercial uses along the highway, which is Highway one eighty there between Patterson Springs and Earl. They're, again, they're asking to change the zoning so that they can expand an existing RV park. They, they currently have a thirty-site park, and they're asking, with the expansion, they would, they're proposing twenty additional sites. RV parks are allowed only in neighborhood business and general business, so that's why they're asking for this zoning district. They've submitted with their petition a site plan showing how they'll develop this property. And you've got this in your packet. Our staff has reviewed this for compliance with any planning development ordinances, and the emergency management office has reviewed as well. And here is an aerial. This picture was taken earlier this year, two thousand twenty-three, and you can see the, the existing park on the property. And then the expansive, the expanded part would be located on this northern section. And all this would be combined into one parcel. Land use plan designates the area as secondary growth. That, that, that designation expects these, these areas to continue to develop as residential areas. We've presented this to the planning board. They recommended approval. They, their comments were that there's already a park there, and they, they thought that the expansion would be compatible with that existing use, and that it seemed to be compatible with that area. With this case, it is a conditional use request, so the board has, the op, the board has other options. They can approve the request as is, they can deny the request, or they could approve with any modifications that the board sees fit. And it also requires a public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions before we open the vote hearing?
I have one. So, we're, this is going to take in the whole park? So, I'm assuming the first part of it was before it had to be neighborhood business, but now we're going to, if, if this passed, it would all be thumbed correctly?
That's correct. The existing park was permitted back when parks were allowed in the residential areas. So, this new part, we, our ordinance has changed since they've expanded, so now they're having to ask to rezone in order to be able to expand.
If, if we approve this, this will be the largest RV park in the county, right?
Uh, I'm not sure.
And we have no maximum number on RVs?
There is not a maximum number of RVs. There is some density requirements as far as how many, calculating how many you can have per acre.
And how, just out of curiosity, where it was there before we had that? Are all the existing ones there, do they meet the requirements now? Or do all of them not meet it, or the part of them meet?
That, that existing park would be compliant with the standards, other than the zoning district.
Okay. So, everything else is in the however many we can have per acre or whatever?
It is. There's a total of eighteen acres, so you could, calculating that...
Have you been out there through the RV park?
I have not been through the proposed park, but I have been through the first couple phases, which is on the screen.
Yeah, but recently, it would be good to send the code enforcement officer out there and look and see if it's being used for what it should be, and that's been the problem with all the RV parks. They're supposed to be recreational parks, but people are moving in, setting a house and living there. By doing that, they're requiring all the services that the citizens who own homes and pay tax on it, they get the same services and don't pay no, nothing. So, you know, I think that sometime before we do some of this zoning, we need to have a code enforcement office, somebody ride through it and really see because I'd be willing to say that you could go to any of the RV parks we got in the county and somebody's living in it full-time, and there's no way that we can tax them for the services they get, and that's my only problem with it.
By statute, there's supposed to be temporary housing, right?
Yeah, they're described in both the Building Code and our local ordinance as a use that's not your principal residence. It should be seasonal or temporary use.
So if you build a deck beside it, probably it's not temporary?
It could be questionable.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chris? All right, here and none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for case 23-15. Mr. Gibson, did you sign up to speak?
James Gibson, Dry Ridge RV Park, co-owner, 414 Davis Road. I just want to say that the park was established in 2019, and we have grown with some expansions since then, up to twenty-eight to thirty sites. The park is running smoothly. We've not had any issues, major issues with the park. This expansion would allow us, as Chris said, to expand twenty more sites. Our sites are within the rules and regulations as far as the size. We do, the site itself is twenty by sixty with a twenty by sixty grass area. We have ample parking for the sites, so the campers are not right on top of one another, so it works out forty by sixty on the sites. But it is, like I say, it is running smoothly with no issues. It does bring income into, or services into the county as far as our journeyman workers. You know, they're buying their fuel, they're buying their groceries, and all of that in the county, and so, you know, we're providing a service that way. Unless y'all have any other questions, that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for James?
Do you have anyone living there?
We have long-term.
Long-term?
We have long-term, yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against case 23-15? This is a request to rezone the property at 414 Davis Road from residential to neighborhood business. This is a conditional use permit for recreational vehicle park expansion. If you would like to speak for or against, please come forward and state your name.
My name's Nathan Mullinax, 120 Valerie Drive, Shelby, North Carolina. Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier, but it's on record at the courthouse. I would like to state that, you know, the tax money is being brought in. Like the gentleman stated, they're buying their gas here, they're buying their food here, they're going shopping in their stores here, and if they choose to live there, so be it. I mean, maybe the RV park itself might pay a nominal fee, which could be incurred on to the renters for the services of the fire and the police and those that are community services anyways. I mean, if this land would catch on fire and there's nobody there to living there or no RVs there whatsoever, if that land were to catch on fire, the fire department would still have to go out there and put it out, regardless. So someone being long-term or short-term and not paying the taxes for the services, I don't feel as important as knowing that these people that are living there are bringing the money into the town, are being, are taxpaying citizens, law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against this case 23?
Hi, my name is Cindy Bailey at 2546 Shoal Creek Church Road. Shoal Creek Church Road is across the road from Davis Road off of Eighteen South, so I'm familiar with that road over there, I'm familiar with that area over there. That's not, it's a very, I don't want to say rundown, but it's not a buy-high-cost area of housing over there. So my concern for all the homeowners over there would be, what does this do to property values over there? I mean, already the property values, I'm sure, are not very, very big, and so I just wonder if it would lower their property values over there if we put something like this in there. And I guess that would be my big question. Taxes, I would say, well, permanent living for sure. Where are they coming from? So they're supporting another area with their regular property taxes if they have a home somewhere else, right? Because where else are they living if they're only here temporarily? So we, the tax money, if they, if we, if they're going to be here permanently, we need to do something like that because they're using our county, and we need to pull in some of that money so we can pay for the honor guard's uniforms. How about that? Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak for or against case 23-15? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments before we call the vote?
I do, directed toward Chris. When you talk about collecting taxes off of RV, the only thing you get is when you buy the tag, correct? For a camper, RV, whatever, recreation vehicle, okay? If they don't rest or if it's not bought in this state, they pay nothing. So that's it, you know? Tell them it's definitely short-term and long-term.
Our code has no definition. It doesn't distinguish between the two.
But anyway, the state does not allow the county to levy any fees or restrictions on these RVs that are tagged, whether they're in our state or out of state. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
So, yeah, you do pay property tax on an RV just like a boat in the county and state records, so if you own an RV in Cleveland County, you pay tax on it.
Right.
Yeah, they're treated as a vehicle.
But anyway, if you're at, if you come from Allen County or Allen State, you don't, you don't pay taxes.
That's right, that's correct.
Can you tell me how many of the residents around there received a letter saying that there's going to be a public hearing tonight?
I'm not sure about the exact number, but we are required, and we did mail notice to all the adjoining property owners.
And was there a sign put up?
There was.
I was there Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and I didn't see a sign anywhere there.
And I'll second that, because I went by, I go by every day going to the nearby.
And I just wondered if the residents around there were aware of what was going on.
Yeah, they've been mailed notice.
Okay, I just, so everything about this meets our requirements for what we put in for an RV park, correct?
It meets the development standards, and those are, and those are design standards as far as the road. Examples of that would be like the road design, making sure that large vehicles like emergency service vehicles can get in and out. There's some landscaping requirements, there's some setback requirements, so it does meet all the design standards.
I'm just, you know, and I don't know how everybody else feels, but you cannot rent a single-wide mobile home in this county now for less than fifteen hundred dollars. And we found out not long ago with the expansion of Medicaid that we have close to forty percent of people that were qualified. I mean, this may be the only way some people can live. And if it meets the rules we put in, you know, I just don't see.
Well, you know, my comment to that, if we're going to allow people to live in it, let us throw the zoning out the window and forget about long stay, short stay, and why are we going through it? Because, you know, we're not going to take care of everybody, but if you're going to say, okay, they can go ahead and move in and live year-round, that's fine. Why can't the microbrewery set up in any area they are?
Well, my thing is, I don't know.
Pick and choosing.
Yeah, I don't know if they're living there.
That's not the question. The question tonight is whether or not to prove this. So if the Board wants to talk about RV parks, then we should direct staff to bring RV parks back and take ample time to study those. The question tonight is this, not RV parks in general.
And I don't, maybe it doesn't pertain, but we don't police it, so we don't know if they're living there or if they're not living there, or I don't, I mean, you know, I wouldn't know if they're staying there three months, six months, or permanent.
That's right. It's a, from an enforcement standpoint, it can be tough to enforce something like that unless you have a very specific ordinance that tells you, that outlines a number of days and requires some sort of way to keep up with occupants.
There's one thing that can happen that the owner should be aware of, is these RV units are not inspected like a house that I would build. I've built houses for a living, so they're not inspected the same. That's the reason they're not, they are handled different as far as tags and different things. So that's the reason by state law, you're not supposed to use them as permanent houses. If something were to happen in one of these RVs and someone were to get hurt, lawyers like to find deep pockets. So the owner should be aware that he could have some responsibility there if he's letting them stay, more than what the law says they can.
I don't know the owner, but if we neglect and let us do it because they need housing, then we're liable also, I would think.
Commissioners, would you put the action slide back up? Does the Board have any other questions about this zoning request? This zoning request is to approve or deny this parcel for an expansion of the RV park under conditional, or actually, a conditional use change from residential to neighborhood business and an expansion of the RV park.
If we approve as presented, Mr. Chair, does that mean he could potentially put a hundred and eight RVs on that land?
It does not. He could only, he can only place the amount shown on the site plan, which was...
And you'd come back with another site plan?
He would have to come back to this Board for approval.
With another condition?
With another conditional use.
It would be another approval process with this Board.
Well, I might be voted down, but I tend to think we need to deny it and then maybe go back and look at RV parks in general, because I think maybe we need to have a maximum amount, because we have to consider the number of people in an area with fire and EMS and law enforcement. And I don't know, but I asked several times, would he be asked me to drive down through there? And each time, staff told me, well, it's private property, I don't know if it's okay or not. Well, I drove down there anyway, and I didn't see anything that bothered me, but it made me wonder, does the law enforcement ride down through there every once in a while just to see what's going on? And so I would make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. Are there any other questions or comments? So all the favorable say aye? Those opposed? Unopposed?
No.
So that's three, too, so you failed. So the motion failed.
Okay.
So now the question is, back to the beginning.
I'll make a motion that we approve the neighborhood business rezoning.
Okay.
And I'll say.
You second that? Now, are there any other questions or discussion? Here and none, all of the favor will say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Passes three to two. All right, next item on the agenda is a request to abandon a portion of a public right-ofway, and this is on Haywood Road. So, Mr. Martin?
So your next request is from a property owner, and they're asking to abandon a right-ofway on the street that they live in, the street that they live on. Petitioner is property owner, Ms. Kelly Boyce, and she owns the property at the dead-end area, section of Haywood Drive off of Highway Ten in the Kazer area. And here's a map showing, outlining her property, and then also showing the area of that road that she's asking to abolish the right-ofway. This is a request that you get occasionally. North Carolina general statute requires the legislative, local legislative board to make the decision on right-ofway abandonments. It does require notice. Staff has ran through the notice process, and notice has been sent to the adjoining property owners, and there were only two in this situation. And then we have posted signs on the property. We have also shared this application with the NCDOT, who has the maintenance right for this road, and they have reviewed and determined that they could release that maintenance if the abandonment is abolished, if the right-ofway is abolished. And here's another GIS map showing that property, and we've highlighted this area of that road in red, and you can see a dead ends into Ms. Boyce's property.
When you talk about, question?
Let him finish.
Okay. This request requires public hearing, and options would be to approve or deny.
Yeah, now, Commissioner Hudson. The Board, do you have, yes, the Board can ask questions now.
The next, the other slide?
You want the red, the light?
Yeah, is there where the black square is, Shelby, where you're going to cut the road off?
Where my red dot is.
Yeah, but...
Cut off there.
Does he own all that property, boat, boat lot?
Is all, four of those owned by the same property?
The petitioner owns the triangle and then the parcel across the road from the triangle and the larger parcel that the road dead ends into. The only other adjoining property is this parcel, and they have a residence, there's two residences on this larger track, and they both access West Cook Road. And then there's a creek running through the back of this parcel. You can see it on the aerial possibly.
Did that answer you? Anybody else have any question?
Does this property start where the sign is? I went there, too, and there is a sign.
It does.
Okay. And there's no houses on either side until you get to the dead end, and then it's an abandoned farmhouse, which is probably this man's family home place or something.
That's correct. It's the petitioner's home or their property.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. If you want to put your action slide back up, Chris. So, Ms. Boyce, would you like to speak?
My name is Kelly Boyce, 523 West Cooker, Kazer. I don't really have anything to say, just if you guys had questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you then. So with that, at this time, we'll ask, is there anyone else present that would like to speak for or against case? I guess we have a case number here. So the request to abandon a portion of the public right-ofway for Haywood Road. Does anybody want to speak for or against this case? All right, here and seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. So Commissioners, do you have any questions or discussions before we take, seek a motion?
No one's having questions, or I'll make a motion. No one's having questions, or I'll make a motion that we approve the banning of the road.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the request to abandon the portions of the public right-of-way for Haywood Road?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? All right, hear and none, all the in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item is the regular agenda, and as Commissioner Hutchins said earlier, we would, so those of you, those of you in the room that were here before the last meeting, I guess it was the June sixth meeting, there were two applications for this Stony Point Road question and property. One was on the agenda tonight, and then the other one is, was on the agenda for August the first. The one on the agenda tonight, which I'm gonna recognize, Chris, in just a second, is Planning Case twenty-three dash ten. This is a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance definition tables of use to allow microbreweries as a permitted use in the rural agricultural district. Public hearing was held on June sixth, and that's the reason there's not gonna be one tonight, so, so it was tabled for, for staff to do some additional research, and that's what we're fixing to discuss next. So you all know, the application for August the first, which was to rezone, and I think it was nine thirty-two Stony Point Road, is that the correct address?
Yeah.
Nine thirty-two Stony Point Road from residential to RA has been withdrawn. So that, so that will not be heard on August the first unless a new, it won't be heard on August the first, but if it's heard in the future would be if the petitioner, something does another application. Is that right, Chris?
That's right.
So with that, I'll recognize you to come forward and explain to the board the additional research that they asked for, and then we'll move forward with a decision on either amending or not to amend the Unified Development Ordinance.
All right, so as Chairman Gordon stated, we had a petition, I'll give you a little background, we had a petition from Philip and Jillian Heidi to define and add microbreweries to our table of uses, and they were asking to add it to the Rural Ag zoning district. And they presented a definition limiting it to fifteen thousand barrels of beer per year. The planning board reviewed at that time and approved, and they noted that the RA district allows for some similar uses such as the wineries. And then the planning board approved that definition and added to it the, the ability to serve food. At your meeting, at your June meeting, you had a lot of discussion about the topic, and you ultimately asked staff to take the item back to the planning board and review our table of uses and the zoning districts, and specifically the general business and light industrial zoning district. Staff did take this item back, back to the planning board, and we've reviewed those districts. And what I'd like to do now is talk a little bit about each of these districts that's been mentioned, both in the petition and the, the general business and light industrial that the commissioners referred to at your last meeting. The first district was the one that the petitioner asked for. It's called Rural Ag, and the purpose is to accommodate agricultural uses, residential uses, in the most rural parts of the county. It requires a minimum of three acres to have a lot in this part of the county or in this zoning district. And then due to the limited number of, or the, the low density, due to the low density, it also allows a limited number, by definition, it says it allows a limited number of non-residential uses. And then it's got a, a long list of non-residential and commercial, and many of those include restaurants, automobile dealerships, dry cleaners, and then on and on. There was, there was a number of those.
Fifty-one.
Yep, pick one. Similar uses to microbreweries that are in that long list of commercial uses include wineries and restaurants. General business, this zoning district is your true retail and service district, and you'll find this district usually located along a main road, an arterial road, and it's gonna include lots of retail, lots of service, some warehousing and distribution uses. Light Industrial, which is the other district that the board asked staff to evaluate, accommodates limited manufacturing, the warehousing and wholesaling, and in light general business, it also accommodates a lot of commercial and service uses. I would point out that the manufacturing that's allowed in light industrial tends to be the type of manufacturing that doesn't impact neighboring properties. Uses that you'll find in this district are contractors, auto repair, building material, retail, and warehousing and distribution. So the planning board reviewed, re-reviewed the request and took into consideration the board of commissioners' comments and, and direction, and they looked at all the zoning districts and looked at the general business and light industrial, and they ultimately recommended to permit microbreweries in the Rural Ag district. They did not change that recommendation. They added the general business, they felt that there were similar uses in general business, light industrial and heavy industrial. And then they went a little farther and noted that the neighborhood business district had some similar uses like restaurant, and suggested approving that, approving microbreweries in neighborhood business with special use. I will point out, I didn't have a slide for heavy industrial neighborhood business because that wasn't the two that, that this board mentioned last month, but the heavy industrial, by our code, describes uses, the, the heavy manufacturing that you would think of as affecting neighboring properties. So these are gonna be like your manufacturing that requires truck traffic and rail and, and lots of water usage and lots of traffic in a four-lane highway. So that's the type of uses you'll find in that district. While the neighborhood business district, when you look at the definition and everything allowed in it, what you get in your mind is a district that allows both residential and small businesses that serve a community around it, like a hair salon is a great example. Car wash, hair salon, those would be the types of uses allowed in neighborhood business. So, planning board recommended, again, they recommended permitting microbreweries in Rural Ag, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial with the zoning permit, and then they added neighborhood business with special use. And tonight, you have several options. You can approve the petition as it was, you can approve it with staff, staff's recommendation, you can deny it. And I think that since we've evaluated the zoning districts, the board has the option of picking out those districts that seem compatible to, to the board of commissioners, that seem compatible to the microbreweries. So you've got five districts there that we've got descriptions of, so the board can evaluate those and approve a modified version of this request in those districts that this board sees fit.
Stay close. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Chris at this time?
I do. The screen you put up there, you only have five, six, that fifty-six. You wanna wiggle them out?
Yep.
I think if doing, looking through it, you got sandmine, okay? Construction service, wood manufacturing, painting service, auto dealership.
Carport.
Auto, I'm not getting them all. I'm skipping through them to show you. Like auto dealership, used auto dealership, auto parts, retail, tire stores, lawn and garden, that could be, you know, being with it, but you got health retail store, convenience and gas store. And then over here, you got, I think you got wine and distilleries, and you've got other ones like auto repair, personal good repair. You know, the thing is, what did you say, fifty-some?
Fifty-one.
You got fifty-one there, and you only showed about five there. That's misleading. You know, that for some reason, this came about even before I came on the boards, because there had to be a way long ago.
Yeah, so if I can add to that, so I, I asked Chris after our meeting the other day, and then he did some more, and you have to recite those dates, so, so that everybody understands, the board and others in the room. So this Rural Ag district predated countywide zoning. Countywide zoning was passed in about two thousand?
Two thousand.
So this first came on the scene in the mid nineteen, nineteen ninety-seven, I think, what you told me?
Ninety-seven.
So, and then it, it appears, based on, I would echo what you said, John, it looks like the uses that are allowed on this sheet, the fifty-one uses, are now out of calibration, are not in line with the intent of what this district was originally. So, I think two things. One, I think this should be looked at, I think the Rural Ag district should be looked at to, to reconnect or recalibrate the uses that are allowed with what the original intent of that zoning classification was. But setting that aside, I think it should be struck from this. I think, Jennifer, I think Rural Ag should be struck from this, if microbreweries are gonna be allowed, and also neighborhood business. I don't, I don't get the neighborhood business piece. I don't understand why the planning board added neighborhood business. I don't get the ten, fifteen thousand square foot building with a hundred plus parking spaces to be a neighborhood business.
On three acres.
On any size. That's not a neighborhood business.
Yeah, neighborhood businesses don't have to be.
I mean, that could be a, a hair salon or barber shop or somebody doing taxes in their house or, or dog and grooming or a whole lot of other things that I might think of neighborhood business as compared to a ten thousand square foot building with a hundred plus parking spaces.
And I, I...
Go ahead.
I would agree. To me, when I hear rural agriculture, I think about something that you're producing like a farm or something. I don't think, I think there's even a solid waste plant you could have on there. I think that whole, if we have that, if we have a zoning called Rural Ag, we need to rethink that whole, what goes in there. Because if I had a farm and had animals and all that out on a farm, I sure wouldn't want a solid waste plant popping up near me. You know, it just, it doesn't fit in. And, and I think most microbreweries are gonna have to have a restaurant or something to go with them, so I think they do fit in in light industrial, general business, and things like that.
There's probably a lot of things on there, even, you know, let's say winery, whatever, the microbrewery would use hops, and we do have some farmers in the county that grow it, so that would be used in some. And I'm like, the chair, I think before we make a decision on that, we need to send it back and let them go over this whole thing and say what should be in it.
Well, I was suggesting, I was suggesting that we strike the RA and neighborhood business and pass this and then send it back. Then ask for the second piece for the Rural Ag district to be looked at, uses versus intent. But if the motion, if it's passed, to send it back again, then that's what the decision is.
I can, I can agree that the rural agriculture, when you look at this list, it, it's a hodgepodge. But, and I agree that maybe we need to look at it and maybe revise it somewhere down the road. But to handle the issue that's on the agenda, we don't have to do that. We don't have to redo the Rural Ag before we can pass this.
Can you, can you bring it back to?
We can amend that list.
Yeah. And, but since there's quite a few things on the Rural Ag that compares with a, a microbrewery, because my knowledge of a microbrewery is somewhere between a sports bar and a restaurant that brews their own beer instead of, instead of bringing it in. So if we're gonna allow that in Rural Ag, then I don't see any reason why not to allow the microbrewery there. Now, if we go back and change the Rural Ag, we could strike it out at that time. So I, I just think it would be, be mixing everything up when you allow a compatible use in one area and not in, not in the area we're talking about now. Now, as far as that list goes, the biggest ones I disagree with is heavy industrial because that's more commercial property, and I don't know that you need a restaurant in a commercial property. And the neighborhood business, I don't agree with at all, so. So that, that, that's my feeling on, on...
I'd like to see us just leave it in general business and light industrial for the time being, because if we agree, it doesn't need to be in Rural, and we're gonna change it, why would we go ahead and put it in there? Somebody might go ahead and buy three acres and have a, a new grass in the middle of a residential area.
But we won't know whether we're gonna take it out of Rural Ag until we do the studies and, and look at it.
But it's not, it's not in there yet, though.
Yeah, but it's not in there now. Do, do we wanna put it in there? I, I would think not.
I think I'll go along with Commissioner Whitson, send it back to the planning board to let him go over these rules and define what is Rural Ag gonna be and what's the requirements to go into it.
Well, that wasn't my, my, I didn't make a motion, but I will if, if someone liked me to, or if, if, if we're ready for that yet.
Ready for a motion, whatever, somebody decides in my board.
All right. Yeah.
Unless there's any other questions.
Yeah. Yeah, by the way, all right. Until we redefine Rural Ag, I feel like, I would like to make a motion that we put the microbreweries in Rural Ag, general business, and light industrial only.
So that's a motion. So the motion is added to Rural Ag, general business, and light industry, so we'd be striking heavy industry and neighborhood business. Is there a second to that? Any other questions or discussion? All right, what's the vote of the board? So all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Three? Okay, so it fails. So that motion fails.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we put it in general business, light industrial, and for the time being, that be, oh, we put it in, and then maybe the planning board can go back and look over rural agriculture.
So, so let me make sure, so your motion is to add it to general business and light industry and then ask the planning board and planning staff to revisit the use, uses versus intent for the Rural Ag zoning classification?
Yes, sir.
And I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion on that? So, so Commissioner Hutchins and Whitson, make sure, so what the, what that motion is, add it to general business and light industry and send it back to study Rural Ag, the list of fifty-one. So we have a motion and a second for that, so all in favor of that will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
So it's three to two. So Chris, are you sure, are you clear on what the direction is?
Yes, so what I...
So it will be added to the table of uses for general business and light industry, but, and then we, the direction is to study the Rural Ag zoning classification, uses versus intent to address this list of fifty-one uses.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
All right. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. We have four of these, I think?
Yes, sir.
So we'll start with the first one, and the first one is the Foothills Workforce Development Board.
Yes, sir. Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint two people to serve a three-year term set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Um, you want to go?
I make a motion, we appoint Rhonda Benfield, Anthony Fogelman.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to appoint the two names. Question? Yes.
Okay, is the city of Shelby in the Foothills Workforce Development?
That I don't know of, sir. I'm not sure.
Because if they don't live in the district, we don't appoint them.
This is what used to be Isol Thermo, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and Shelby is part, because they, they got representatives on that board, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
These applicants have...
I was looking at Doug because, because I used to be on it, and then he's on there now.
These applicants have been vetted by Annette Stanley, the operations manager for the Foothills Workforce Development Board.
So we have Ms. Benfield, Mr. Fogelman. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, that motion carries unanimous. Next one is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, all applicants have been vetted and recommended by Sarah Brunner, the Juvenile Justice Prevention DPS representative. You will need to appoint three people for a two-year term set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I would like to nominate Kathy Robertson, Phil Weathers, and Jeff Leffler.
Second.
So a motion and a second to both Ms. Robertson, Mr. Weathers, and Mr. Leffler. All the in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next board is Social Services Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. All applicants have been vetted and recommended by the social services staff and their social services board. services board. You will need to appoint a total of five people, four people for a four-year term set to expire June 30th, 2027, and any other appointments that you may seem necessary.
Pleasure, board.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? I think I know the, the answer to this, but I just wanted to clarify. Two years ago, we set an additional seat to expire this year.
Correct.
Now we've extended it, so.
You would have to make the new seat. Technically, that seat is been done since June 30th, so if you were to fill it, you would need to make another two-year seat.
Okay.
Because it was a one-time only.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I understood.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
But if I'm not mistaken, the concern is, we don't continue doing this over and over.
That's correct.
So if we do it again, the intent for social services to understand is, is that this is it?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand why it needs to be done, or, or they would like for it to be done now, but, and I'm not opposed to that, but I just don't want to see this every two years us extending it.
It, it was created because of someone being the chair at the state level that wasn't put back on the board, so.
And this is the same situation.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it happened twice, so this should be the last time.
So I think what the board is saying, make sure we clearly communicate that this seat is going to expire in June 30th, 2025, and it's not going to be extended again.
Correct. It's a brand-new two-year appointment that you all.
See to what the seat of the board is.
Yes.
Okay. Did that answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Harden, Glenton, Huss, and, hey, pronounce that fourth name, Deese.
Takachi.
Di, DiKachi?
DiKachi.
And Mary Acker for two years to expire, no longer have a seat.
For just the Mary Acker.
Yes. Or that particular sequence, that sequence.
Yes, sir.
Or unless she is not reappointed to the state board.
All right, do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, here, none, so we're approving the names that Commissioner Hudson read off, so all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that motion carries unanimous. And I think we have more, one more.
Is that all the seats it needs?
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
So then the next one is.
The MPO Commissioner.
We need to appoint a commissioner representative to the MPO, which is the Juvenile Planning Organization, is it organization?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, appoint Commissioner Whitstein, and Commissioner Bridges, that is all in the back of.
Well, now, Mr. Hutchins, you've been doing a good job for a long time, so I wouldn't want to take your seat unless you're happy.
So we have a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, here, none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for getting all those together. Next item on the agenda, does any commissioners have anything they'd like to discuss? All right, here, none, staff, the staff have anything they'd like to discuss?
No report.
I do have one thing, please. Mr. Chair, for, for the people in the public that think we just get together and decide what we're going to do, tonight just proves that we study long and hard on what we do, and we don't always agree. We're always agreeable, but we, we don't always agree, and just want the public to know that we all have your best interest at heart, and it's just an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, so.
Recognize 50, and the DSS Director.
Oh, yeah, we can. So go ahead, Rhonda.
Okay. I don't think we've done this out in public, but, but we, I'd like to introduce you to our new Rebecca Johnson as our new DSS Director, and.
interim director.
Interim. And she's going to be working real closely with our Health Department Director, Tiffany.
Do you want to make a speech?
You know that I'm, I'm happy to be here tonight, and served the county for 24 years now at DSS, and look forward to a good meeting more, and good times.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the board of commissioners, before we adjourn, the board of commissioners will meet again on Tuesday, August the 1st, 2023, here in the commissioners' chamber, beginning at 6:00 PM. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All righty, we adjourn.